10C, adopt a resolution approving cable television services and rates effective July 1st, 2010. Mr. Furpo.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Annually, the City Council reviews the rates and services of San Bruno Municipal Cable to consider any amendments. You have before you the staff report which details my presentation, and I'll be providing you with the highlights and staff's recommendation for your consideration. Over the past two years, as shown in Table 2 of your report, substantial increases in programming costs have occurred. These are the fees that San Bruno pays to various programmers that make up 38 percent of our cable budget. Almost every channel we offer charges a fee for carriage, and in aggregate, these charges have increased over 22 percent in the past years. Last year, the City Council adopted a rate increase of eight and a half percent, which offset some of those programming fees, but not enough to capture all of last year's increases and the capital expenditures necessary to run a viable business. San Bruno Cable is a member of the National Cable Television Cooperative, which strives to negotiate the lowest rates on our behalf for majority of our channels. Some programmers that we pay directly require individual contracts, and while we have dropped some channels due to contract pricing disputes, in many cases, we have been successful in negotiating the lowest fees possible. Despite these efforts, programming costs continue to gradually increase over the course of the various contract terms, and sometimes more dramatically, as in the case of Comcast SportsNet, creating the basis for our rate increase for video services. As shown in Table 1 of your report, a 14.86 increase for video services is proposed. This video service increase is necessary to fully cover our actual increases in programming costs that have occurred over the last two years. It should be noted that there will not be any increase on the limited basic service, those are the channels from 1 through 26. There also won't be any increase on Internet service as well. During the past year, San Bruno basic cable rates have continued to be priced under Comcast by about 25 percent, as determined by the annual rate survey, which is provided as attachment 2 in your report. After the proposed rate increase is implemented, San Bruno's cable rate will still be about 7 percent below Comcast rates. At this time, although Comcast generally has a rate increase later in the year. The annual comparison to satellite and AT&amp;T services, provided as an attachment 5 of your report, indicates that San Bruno Cable's video packages and rates remain comparable to other local video service providers. San Bruno Cable has led the way in the Bay Area by offering a complete digital cable system before the other cable providers in surrounding markets. We've upgraded our Internet service to be able to offer 100 megabits per second downloads in 2010-11. This new Internet service utilizes DOCSIS 3 technology and channel bonding. What's channel bonding? Okay. I'll explain a little bit about what DOCSIS 3 is, because I throw these terms out sometimes and see confused faces. DOCSIS 3 is a technology that has advanced for Internet delivery, and it's a different modem than the one most of you have already, or all of our subscribers have, and it has the ability of delivering more bandwidth to the subscriber. It's done two ways. Currently, we use one channel on our system for the download of data. In the future, we'll be able to use four channels, and we'll bond them together, and this new device, this DOCSIS 3 modem that we'll employ, will be able to pick the frequencies of those channels and download more information, it's just a bigger pipe, so they'll be able to download more information. We have that technology, and we'll be implementing it in 2010-11 and offering those services. While initial growth might be slow for those services, utilized mainly by tech savvy users, all industry indicators point to this service as a future model for delivering and viewing video services. As provided in Table 3 of your report, four levels of services ranging from 20 megabits per second to 100 megabits per second download, and rates ranging from $87.95 to $149.95 are proposed. We are using our existing fiber plant and extending new fiber to business complexes to offer commercial services. As you are all aware, we currently provide phone and dedicated Internet service to the city of San Bruno, and dedicated Internet access to the San Bruno Park School District. We completed installation of the infrastructure for delivery of commercial services to our local business community during the past year, and will be expanding dedicated Internet access and business phone services to the greater business community here in San Bruno. A comprehensive list of proposed commercial services and rates are also provided in Table 4 and 5 of your staff report. These additional offerings to commercial businesses will enhance our viability, deliver cost savings to local businesses, and eliminate the cable fund deficit over the next five years, as shown in the business plan, Attachment 4 of your staff report. In addition, in 2010 and 11, we'll be conducting a direct marketing campaign, using a door-to-door strategy to actively target non-subscribers to ensure customer growth, as well as campaigns for existing customers to ensure customer retention. The Cable Subcommittee met on April 9th, 2010, to review the proposed service and rates and recommended approval. If approved, the rate increase and proposed new service rates would take effect on July 1st, 2010, and as required by law, a 30-day rate increase notice will be delivered, and we'll deliver that in the June bills. The rate increase information will also be posted on our website and on Channel 1. That concludes my presentation. The City Manager and I will take questions.
Questions of Steve or City Manager? Michael?
Through the Chair, yes. I had initially some concerns about how the rate increase was being applied, and I know that there was a large capital investment that was specifically for bringing on commercial customers and ensuring the viability of the company. And I believe that it has been properly allocated, the costs have been properly allocated, so that the consumers are not going to see a big increase because of that investment. And unfortunately, we have very little control over what we pay for the services that we supply to the customers. I did want to acknowledge the efforts that the staff has made to keep those costs down, and it hasn't been easy, and I know that it is a difficult job, but it is hard for people to justify having to pay more for television, but I do want anyone who's watching or listening to know that it isn't because we haven't tried to keep those prices down. And it does seem that, you know, it's an expensive business. I was happy to see, just another side comment, I was happy to see that the basic, the very basic service is maintaining its price, because I know there are a lot of people on limited incomes, and they rely on their television for entertainment and information, so at least we were able to hold that. So, thank you for that effort.
Any questions?
Through the Chair. You left the door open with the, you know, with the 9.7 percent increase, and so I'd like to hear why it would be advantageous for us to go with the proposed, you know, 14.86 increase over just the, you know, the 9.7 percent increase. I know it includes, you know, the deficit reduction, but then, I mean, we have all these grand ideas of that the commercial component is going to, you know, bring us out of that. And I know it's only a couple dollars, it's just under $3 of difference, so...
There's two, I'll have a response to that, so that there's two issues. One, the 9.7, as you correctly stated, will not cover any of the debt reduction. It is strictly for programming costs and fees only. So, it's out there because it's an option, but it's not a recommended alternative. To Councilman Salazar's comment regarding the deficit and the spending that was done for commercial services, those, commercial services was a small part of that project. There was also lots of video projects associated with that, too. We upgraded our DAC, we upgraded the boxes, we've added more HD channels, we've done a lot with video. So, video really is the major component of that reduction. We bought 20,000 set-top boxes, so there's quite a bit of video. So, that increase, that 14.86 recommended increase is for video services only, really, and to cover that debt reduction and the programming fees.
So, the follow-up question is, what if we don't? What if we were to, what if the majority were to just approve the 9.7 percent increase? How would the...
We would be able to cover our operating expenses, but nothing towards debt reduction, I think, let me refer to...
If you look in your report, Attachment 3, which is page 33 in your package, I think you see the net result of either of the options.
Oh, jeez, it's right here.
And again, we've provided you with an option because we recognize that the over 14 percent increase is a very significant amount. Would simply remind the Council that part of the reason that we're in a deficit position and really, in many respects, struggling to cover the operating costs and the programming cost increases is that the rate increase that occurred last year was maintained at an amount of eight and a half percent, where the original recommendation for full cost recovery was at a higher amount. As a result, the bottom line, the deficit got bigger, and again, this year, at 9.67 percent, we would essentially break even on costs on a year-for-year basis, but not progress in the direction that we believe has been historically the Council's interest. So, we recommend the 14.86 percent, and you really have an option, not just at the 9.67 percent, but we thought it was desirable to give you at least some perspective about what an alternative rate amount would look like.
Okay, thank you. Let's say we look a few years ahead, and commercial is just doing gangbusters, I mean, we're selling phone service to, you know, public agencies all around us, and, you know, and, you know, it's really paying off. How does that affect our customer rates? How would that affect? Would that potentially keep them down, or is it always going to be based on, you know, the channels, you know, the, those increases?
Well, we know the programming fees are going to most likely go up, continue to go up, and that cost would more or less be borne by our subscribers, our video subscribers, who are paying for that service. However, commercial services, if they were to take off in the manner that you're saying that they would take off, and we certainly hope they do, there would be a cost savings for our customers.
Again, if you look at page 34 in your staff report, you see some projections, I realize it's a little bit small numbers and a little bit complicated, but you see at the top of the page, total costs for the various components of our service delivery, including the commercial services, and down at the very bottom of the page, projections over a five-year period, five-year period, that show the deficit gradually being resolved through a combination of video side, Internet, and commercial service rates. Again, those are projections. So, we've anticipated some cost increases associated with programming, as well as generating a demand for the commercial services program.
So, commercial, the commercial program has come at the right time?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And I will say that the Subcommittee did, at some length, discuss just what you brought up, the 9-plus or the 14-plus, and figuring the fact that even with 14, we're still very competitive, we might as well just get this done and start to get this whittle down.
I guess my last comment is, what do you think, what do you think the increase that Comcast will propose? You know, will it go up? Will it be closer to the 25 percent?
I'm sure it will go up, but I think it was 8 percent last October.
So, it'll, they'll, they'll be about a 20 percent gap?
Their programming costs are going up as well, so imagine they would be going up.
Good for them.
Through the Chair.
Vice Mayor.
Several things, but in looking at Attachment 5, if I'm not mistaken, aside from the Basic Limited, am I reading this correctly, that the other services were at the high end? As far as Basic Expanded, Digital Basic, Galaxy Pack, or am I incorrect?
Attachment 5, Councilman?
Uh, page 35.
Yeah, I read that a little bit differently. Councilmember Medina, this is...
That's why, that's why I thought I would ask, because I'm sure you were going to enlighten me.
Two different, first of all, this is a comparison that the City Council asked for last year.
That's correct.
We provided a means of comparing what, in some cases, really amounts to apples and oranges, as opposed to apples and apples. But we've done about as well as we can, and what you see is there's a variation in this table about the quantity of channels and the variety of services that are provided. So, you know, I guess you could interpret it in a variety of different ways, but I would say if you compare the services provided or the channels provided and the cost, it's kind of a, it's kind of a mix. And I would see San Bruno Cable being more towards the middle, perhaps a little bit to the high side, but then you're not comparing cable service to cable service the way we compare when we look at Comcast or another cable service provider, you're comparing to a completely different technology. And as the table indicates, you have a variety of different costs and charges and contractual obligations associated with many of those types of service, DirecTV, DirecTV and the Dish, for example.
I'm probably one of the ones that has the biggest worrying concern as far as the cable. Everything else in here, I'm comfortable with, with the exception of the cable rates at this moment. Just speaking out loud, giving my piece, it's just, we have lost customers as far as cable. I'm not saying that because I want to, you know, them see me on TV more, but in reality, over, you know, last year, I'd say we've lost hundreds, not one or two. It happened before I was driving to the, coming to the meeting, there was a neighbor watering the lawn, he moved in a year ago, and he probably won't do that on a night of council meeting again, but I said, you know, "What do you have?" He says, "AT&amp;T." "Why?" I really didn't know much about San Bruno Cable, what it had to offer, plus I had AT&amp;T where I moved from, as far as the Internet and as far as phones, so it was just kind of a package deal, and he went with that. Though, probably, as he told me as I was leaving, hey, you know, if there's a better package out there, maybe I would, I would think about it, I always want to save a buck. My concern is, is that people that leave for other services, I think it's very hard to get them back. I remember, it was fact or figure that was given, of what really it costs when you lose a subscriber, because having to go out there and earn it, and what the true cost is that annually. And it was, it was quite staggering to me, and I don't know if you remember what that was or is, but it's a high number. And we've lost hundreds, and I can tell you, when I walked the streets in 2005, there were not so many Dishes. There were not so many other providers, AT&amp;T was not amongst us. In this last go-around, though I walked very little, or only to certain areas, the Dishes have just tripled, and it's obvious by the amount of folks that we've lost. And I understand that we provide a great service. I think service is critical, because to me, even if you're at the same level of your competitors, but if you offer a service level and an opportunity in which they have your problems fixed, and people respond in a timely fashion, people are willing to pay equal because it's local and it provides a better quality service. That has still been a concern to me, because we are taking on so much new technology, I don't know if we have the ability to keep up with these times. We know how diligent the other providers are coming out with the leaflets in the mail and the advertisement on TV. Can we keep up with that? So, I have a real concern going up to that percent. I'm not understanding, though, the 9.7 was given as a cover the costs, but why not, you know, why aren't we looking at a 11.7 or a 12 to meet the objective of covering costs, meet the objective of some deficit reduction, which I'm a little confused, because when Councilmember Sellers are asked, "The ratepayers are not paying for the deficit," the answer was, "That's correct," but then the way it's being said again, it sounds like they are. So, I'd like to get clarity on that, and why aren't we going somewhere in the middle? I just think, it just gets more challenging for folks, and I can just tell you, garbage, they don't have a lot of places to shop. There's one place in town, and it's a requirement by municipal code, as we were told, every seven days, it's got to be picked up. Here, it's a whole different animal. They have options, there are a lot of options, and they're going to those options. And I understand the potential for the commercial is great and hopeful, but it's uncharted, and I don't know when that's going to kick off, I'd like to know that, I'd like to know what we have in the pipeline, to see that that is going to flourish in some way. So, anyway, some of my commentary for right now.
Well, I can speak to the rates, if, it's the pleasure of Council to go with a 12.5 percent increase, or whatever you decide, that would just, that rate, that deficit reduction would be reduced, that's how that affects it. And the rates paid by these rate increases will go towards that deficit reduction, but because there are video components to that deficit reduction that have to be paid, so that's, so it does go towards that deficit reduction. And it would, if we did a 12.5, if it was a 12.5 percent, it would cut that amount to 250,000 to 125,000, towards that debt reduction. Commercial services, where are we on commercial services? We are, currently, we have two customers out there that are very interested and serious about commercial services. One, we actually have hooked up and connected, and we are charging this person, this company for their service, they're very happy with the service, and we hope, just by word of mouth and a campaign in those buildings, that we're going to pick up quite a few other businesses at that location. We have another company that's also very serious about not only Internet access, but phone service, and we're waiting on these approvals here to determine whether we can go ahead with that. We've already given them what we think are the rates that are going to be for that service, and they're very interested. So, we've already done some of that homework and some of that marketing, just as a test to get out there. We are expanding our fiber optic network, as I said before, we're expanding it to several buildings in Bay Hill that are not served yet by San Bruno Cable, for that, for that very purpose, in hopes of, strong hopes of getting large Internet access, dedicated Internet access to those subscribers.
City Manager, anything?
No, I would just echo what the staff is saying, the businesses that we're talking to and have actually come to us, when staff indicates word of mouth, there will, that is, that is not what we're relying on totally, but we have found that, in fact, the business that is connected is in a multi-business tenant building, word spreads fast, and this being a very cost-effective option with a high level of service for our business customers is a, is a new opportunity that we think is going to take off in a very productive manner. Second customer that we're looking at is a business with as many as 100 phone lines. So, again, we're talking to both small as well as fairly substantial businesses, and preparing ourselves to move into the Bay Hill Office Park, which is, we believe, a terrific business opportunity.
Through the Chair.
Michael.
To clarify what my question and why I was satisfied with the answer, my concern was that there were portions of the capital investment that were specifically dedicated toward commercial, and I wanted to make sure that those costs weren't being tacked on to the residential side of it, and that was taken into account, so that's why I was satisfied with the answer. Getting back to the deficit reduction, the, we did make a major investment in the plant, and I'm wondering, on a going-forward basis, is this something we're going to see again in a few years? Is there any sort of reserve, an equipment reserve like we have in the general fund for replacing equipment, whether it's set-top boxes or upgrading equipment, or should we expect to see another deficit in a few years?
We have to continue to purchase, you know, the set-top boxes as demand warrants it. Those expenditures are accounted for, and we're hoping that we are not going to add to the deficit in the next few years. We're trying to pay it down, that's the whole point of this rate increase and the point of our operating budget. And so, that's our intention. Okay.
Let me, let me add to that a little bit. There are no indicators on the horizon that it's a substantial investment that we have recently made, both to the, for the transition to an all-digital platform, which substantially not only enhanced services to our customers, but provided massive compression of our channels in, so adding capacity, which allowed us to add, I believe, over 100 channels in the last 18 months or so. The, a rebuild or a capital investment of that magnitude, or of the magnitude that we've recently made to launch the commercial services, is not something that is on the horizon. So, we are confident that the plant is now situated for the near-to-long-term future for the deployment of the services and the recovery, as the staff has indicated, of the amounts that were not available on reserve and were necessarily expended in order to situate the company to keep up with the demands of the future.
And I know that industry-wide, the trend is that a lot of people are moving away from cable television, and we have seen significant rises in Internet subscribers, so we're making it up on that side. We've made the investment on the video side, and I noticed that there are some price structures here for the new higher-speed Internet, and I'm wondering if there is a requirement on the Internet side to make investments? Is that going to be covered with the proposed costs without incurring any other plant investment that we need to do on a large scale upfront?
To the services that we're offering, that we're going to be offering in the near future, no. We've made those, we've made those improvements, we have that equipment, and so we don't need to do any other infrastructure improvements at this time for that. We'll be able to offer that level of service that I talked about earlier, starting July 1. Okay, thank you.
My last comment is that I'm just, everything's going up, and I'm speaking about, you know, Joe Resident, who just got his, his garbage rate went up a dollar, and this possibly goes up $5. What did the, what did the water rate go up to? And gas, and all, everything else that just keeps going up, and insurance rates and everything, so, I mean, I know one side of me says, "It's good business sense, get that deficit down," but then again, I'm looking at the projections, it's still going to take five to six years, you know, to pay that down. $200,000 versus, you know, nothing this year. If I can convince me that there's going to be just a nominal increase next year, I know there's always going to be an increase, you know, but are we looking at another $5 increase? Are we looking more like at a $1 increase or a $2 increase, you know? Those are the things that I, you know, that would get me to say, "All right," you know, but I'm just really, you know, and I realize a 9, 9 percent increase is only a $3 increase versus, you know, it's a $3 difference, so, this is, you know, you make the decision now, and then we forget about it, but, I mean, if we make a decision that doesn't increase, then maybe you feel good for a little while, so...
Steve, is the, is the 14 percent plus the major, major portion of that from retransmission and from the Comcast situation with the Bay Area and Comcast, you know, California thing and the Univision and all of that, did that skew this whole thing this year?
Well, I, actually, the 14 percent increase, 14.86 percent increase is, is to cover the programming costs, like I said, from last year that we did not cover, and this year, so it did skew that, and also the deficit. So, it's, yes, to answer your question.
Okay. Through Chair, I'm, you know, having my, and again, it's just with the rates, and I worry about the future. I would say, too, that I would be interested, I would be interested to know, if the rates go up on July 1, I'm sure they will, if there's a tracking mechanism that could be used to see truly what effect this action would have...
see truly what effect this action would have on the subscription rate, on the subscribers. We know we lose it sometimes with certain programming. Obviously, we don't get them back, they go elsewhere, and it's hard to get them back. I'm also wondering, you're talking about going to a door-to-door campaign, but have we thought of asking those that maybe have left us, those that are still with us, whether you can, I want, maybe call it a focus group, come together and, and get some feedback, whether you offer them a couple pay-per-views for their time, or phone survey, or whatever it is, but I'm wondering, how, how do we basically reach out and tap into what is good about us, what we can improve about us, how we can provide a better service that will have our subscribers retained with us, as well as win back others? I understand we're going to do this campaign, but let me tell you, you know they've already been out there knocking door to door, and you know what, what they're doing to try to win over customers, and they're succeeding. And, and I don't know that we can compete, and, and I wonder even going further down the road, do we need to have some type of a, I won't call it a blue ribbon committee, but something that really looks the viability of the cable department, of where we're at, where we're going, the future, its investments, what it's worth to the city, both owned or, or if it were ever thought of even putting it out? I mean, but, but I wonder, you know, we're at some real technology as far as crossroads and trying to keep up with some very big players that have a lot of money and, and resources behind them. So, I worry about today, but I'm also wanting us to look down the future, too, as, as far as some of those things.
As you, as you mentioned, we are addressing the subscriber losses by the campaign, the door-to-door campaign, which we were hoping to start this year, but it didn't come to fruition, and we, we need to do that. And to the point of a focus group, a couple of years ago, I did some surveys with SurveyMonkey, it's called, program that I was able to put out and get some feedback from people on what they liked about San Bruno Cable, what they didn't like. We did not do a comprehensive one, was mainly a test market, but that's something we certainly could do, and I think, I think that's a path we should go on. One of the issues with the competition is that they're taking subscribers from the largest market share in this area, us. So, their offer can be really good, at least upfront. They make, these, these folks make you sign a two-year contract, so they make their money back over that period of time, and it's tough to get those customers back, because it's, it's difficult to change unless you have an offer that is, is substantially better. That's what this campaign, upcoming campaign will do for us. We'll be able to give them a very good offer. We don't make them sign a contract, so they'll be able to get out of their other contracts and, and work with us.
Tease your balance is out.
And at this point, we've, I think we have a viable market out there that's, that's gone from us, that we can tap and make it a very good impression.
One final question, Mr. Furpo. I've known you and I have faith in, in the work that you do in the department. I want to ask you very honestly and forthright and bluntly, do you feel that the recommendation from staff, and of course, this comes from you, but I want to hear from you as to why it should be at the 14-plus percent, not 12, not 9.7? I, I want to hear from you and your expertise, you've been there a long time, you've done a, a good job, in my opinion, and so I want to hear from you.
Well, I can tell you that the staff and the subcommittee and in previous meetings, we wrestled with this quite a bit. It's, it's a, it's a large increase, we're aware of that, but we have the deficit that we have to address. And so, from a business perspective, again, you know, that's something we, we need to address. If we, if we keep ignoring it, it's not going to go away. I think that any rate increase that we've done, I've done some analysis on rate increases in the past, and we've, we've taken a 1% or so hit just on rate increases in the past. I think this rate increase will, will take a larger hit. I think it will take close to 2% or 3%. It is a larger increase. I recommend the 14.86 from strictly a business perspective. I think we need to do it. We, we have to reduce that deficit, and it, you know, the other recommendation that I gave you earlier was 12%. That would give us some money towards a reduction, it's a less of an increase. That's the pleasure of the council.
Thank you.
And as I said, in the subcommittee, we wrestled with this for quite a while. I guess the bottom line for me was, and maybe I make it too simple, is if you're going to lose some people because of a rate increase, are you going to lose them because of 14% or 12% or 9%? People say, rate increase, I'm out of here, or I'm sticking around. I don't think the percentage, that 2% here or there really makes, really makes a difference. I think you have to look at the, at the bigger picture, I think, in the, in the paperwork here and the discussions we had over the last number of months, they're really able to justify it. We're doing a good job, we're still in the market, and I think the campaign, especially the, the door-to-door campaign that we're going to embark upon, and the commercial services that, that you're really working hard on, I know it's really hard to get off the ground, but now we're out there, are going to make a difference. It's just my feeling, so.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm struggling with it, but I'm going to go with it. I mean, it's, it's a recovery, and I'm just going to be hard-pressed to, to vote for something as, as large as a $5 increase, you know, any time in the future, but I realize what, what this organization has gone through in the last, you know, the last couple of years and stuff, and so, I'm, we've made good sense in this, in this organization, and as much as the vice mayor may think that, you know, we, we are losing, but we've got a lot, we've got a lot of satisfied customers. We've got a lot of people that would probably, that would be a major uproar if we even considered putting it up.
Which is?
In your terms, putting it up. I, I think it's a value that it is a municipally-run, you know, organization, so with that, I'm going to, I'm going to vote for the increase, the recommendation.
Would you like to introduce the resolution for adoption?
If there's no other discussion, I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember Iber.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Rueng.
Aye.
That was tough.